Gentlemen, welcome to the Sebastian Planning and Zoning Commission. Today is Thursday, July 7, 2022. Call to order, please. Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Cottonburg.
Here.
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Ms. Jordan.
Here.
Mr. Kristino.
Present.
Ms. Kinchen.
Here.
And Mr. Alvarez.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a couple of announcements this evening. Mr. Lucier and Ms. Battles are excused from tonight's meeting. And Mr. Kristino and Ms. Jordan will be voting in their place. Next item is approval of minutes. Do we have commissioners, any objection, any corrections?
I would make a motion that the minutes be approved as submitted.
Second.
We have approve-- Mr. Simmons, second.
Call for the vote.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carried, approval of minutes. All right, item number six, public hearings. Seeing none. Item number seven, unfinished business. Seeing none. Public input, do we have anyone here in the public that wishes to make an announcement other than what's on the agenda this evening? Seeing none. Moving right along. New business. Ms. Ranone, would you-- we have any new business? Nope, okay, Ms. Dory.
Good evening, good evening, commissioners. This is being presented tonight, but we wanted to start off with a discussion instead of coming before you immediately as the LPA with the public hearing. Staff itself, as we were trying to put together this new zoning district that's required by our comp plan, RM10, we had some different things too that we were putting together, the ordinance that we felt that we wanted to run past you first to see if we were on the right track, if you feel this is a good direction to put some of our attainable housing codes into place. And wanted to discuss with you first, from tonight, from your input, we will go back and create an ordinance for this, and we will schedule then a public hearing for the LPA with your input tonight into the ordinance. But reviewing some of the information that we gave you tonight, the attainable housing packet information from ULI and the information in there, I think we have a good springboard of the information that they're talking about that helps with attainable housing in our first draft of this RM10 zoning district. We have Kelly Kepler from Kimley Horn here tonight, our consultants, and Monae Moore, they're going to help with the discussion. They have, they put together a PowerPoint with some slides that we'll be interspersing into our discussion tonight. Kelly, if you want to start with the comp plan so we can see where we're, why we're here, where we're at today with this, with this new zoning district.
Okay, perfect.
And good evening again, my name's Kelly Klepper. For the record, with me is Monae Moore.
Sorry. Did you hit the mic?
Yeah, I was gonna say, gentleman told me don't move the mic, and he's going to adjust it.
Having trouble understanding, looking my hand. Yeah, if you want to just put it up a little bit, maybe.
Okay, is that a little bit better?
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, he was saying, don't get too close, otherwise you will sound like Charlie Brown's teacher, so I was trying to be better, but okay. As Dory said, this is a workshop, we're looking for your input. We've got a few things we want to kind of talk through tonight, including the comprehensive plan. Even though we're not making modifications to the plan, it kind of gives us, as Dory said, that springboard, that legal basis to move forward with the implementation of the RM10 and some of our other standards. Keeping in mind, of course, that the comprehensive plan is that legal document that gives us that overarching guidance and policy. The code itself is what implements the plan. So, what we're going to do, and I'm going to have Dory and Monae, we're kind of do a little bit of an open discussion, so you may hear one or more of us talking at, on a specific topic or a specific slide. But what we wanted to do is just kind of do a quick reminder, and Dory, did you want to go through this, or did you want me to go?
I'll let you do the comprehensive.
Okay, so, there again, when we redid the city's comprehensive plan, there were a series of policies that came out as part of that, including an update to the land use element that provided for the medium density residential development, or the MDR. Under that, it allowed for and provided for a variety of housing types, whether they're attached or detached, for rent, for sale, and Ms. Cottonburg, you were very instrumental in a lot of that discussion, especially with the housing element, so you'll see a lot of your work in here as well. But at the same time, one of the things that you start to see right in the middle of that policy is a maximum density, or increases in density of up to 10 and/or up to 12, depending on the use of TDRs, so those transfer development rights and/or incentives. So, one of the things that we are currently working on, of course, are the TDRs and the incentives, and we'll be bringing incentives, and we'll be bringing that back as a second component for the code update as we're moving forward. But there again, as we were talking through this, this allowed the city to, the ability to go up to 10 units per acre based off of certain criteria, and then they could go up to 12 under additional criteria. What this policy did, there again, is provide that framework for the code itself. This does not, in any sense or any shape, change anybody's existing property development approvals or rights. This is one additional tool that the city has at its disposable, at its disposal, excuse me, to help achieve some of those things that we were talking about, that missing middle housing, providing densities that can be a little bit more cost effective from a development perspective, and also provide a better usage of the city's infrastructure from a level of service perspective. So, there again, this created, this policy was created to provide that initial framework. When we started talking about the housing, you can start to see that kind of cross-reference between the housing and the future land use that says, you know, the city threw its land development code, there again, that is that implementing document required by Florida statutes to encourage development and redevelopment of housing that will integrate housing options, housing types, ownerships, and different levels across neighborhoods. And when we say neighborhoods, we're talking about different areas of the city, not just one specific neighborhood or a defined neighborhood. The other thing that it identified in that next policy was that we're going to promote livability through processes, through the codes, through the standards, through the use of those items that the city has at its disposal, including the land development code and some of those development related incentives. So, there again, we wanted to take a few moments and kind of refresh you on where we came from and why, and there, you know, as part of the discussion that we had before this body, it was all about what are we doing about housing affordability, attainable housing, that missing middle, and more importantly, you know, providing those best planning practices that can be applied in the real world setting. Now, what's interesting is, Dory mentioned, when we were meeting with her earlier, there's already projects that are looking at not only the additional density we're talking about, but also the code components that we're going to be talking about tonight.
Kelly, can I just quick interrupt? So, not interrupt, but to connect some dots on that. So, the first policy that he had on the screen was the medium density residential land use. So, there already is medium density land use on our land use map. What that did is, is we didn't get rid of it, but it kind of updated it, though. In our old comp plan, the medium density was eight units per acre. The new comp plan still kept the medium density land use, but we increased the density to 10 units per acre, and also up to 12 units per acre, as the next chart will show, with some incentives in density, transfer of density rights and incentives. So, I wanted to explain that we didn't, we didn't change or add anything to that medium density, just the amount of density that you can have for that land use, that medium density land use. What kind of, where we're at though, the quagmire is, is that we have some RM8 zoning district, and you can see up here, that's in the land use, I apologize, with the zoning. Your RM8 zoning district still only allows the eight units per acre, but we wanted to create a new land use RM10 that will accommodate the increased density of the 10 units per acre for the medium density land use. So, always remember that we're talking land use and zoning, two different levels there of what, we're going over land use right now, and we're creating a new zoning district to accommodate the new density that we approved in that medium density.
And just to kind of build off of something that Dory was just talking about, you know, it's a very key component that we understand that, you know, it would have been simple and easy to just, just to go in and, excuse me, modify the RM8, make it RM10, but at that point, what you start to run into is, you have, that point, rezone people's, individuals' properties either without their permission, consent, or we've made wholesale changes to the city that may not be undertaken or reviewed through the public process like we do with a specific application. So, what we decided, and what we recommend, and what we typically recommend is, you've got RM8 on the ground right now, you have projects that are built, they're developed, those are thereby right, there's nothing wrong with them, let them stay under that RM8. Let's create the new district that is that option that the city has to say, okay, you can still do the RM8, you can do whatever you want to, or if you want to pursue a something different, an alternative form, here's a new district that you can then apply. We have intentionally not mapped it on the city's zoning map. Why? Because it's not being applied to a specific property just yet. Where it can be requested is within that medium density residential and the future land use, but there again, that requires that public hearing, that process to be reviewed by the planning board as well as the city, so that there is that public input from a couple of different reasons and a couple of different perspectives. So, and I keep remembering, keep forgetting who's doing what here, Dory, but.
Yeah, no, just go ahead.
So, one of the things that you have right now, of course, is the RM8, and what we did is just did a quick excerpt from your current standards as far as what it permits, and you can see the uses on the left, single family, duplex, multifamily, foster care, home occupations, townhouses, and accessory residential. Now, here's where it becomes a very interesting and very important thing to remember. We're going to be talking about townhouses as part of an actual use that is allowed within the RM8 and the RM10. You have to keep in mind and remember that there is a separate set of standards specific to townhouses that's within the land development code that is still there. So, just because we're providing that as a use, the city has standards, the city still wants to maintain those standards, and we're supporting those standards, so you'll see that referencing, and I know, Dory, you may want to interject something as we're talking on this as well.
Sure, I did want, we did give you a copy of the RM8, the existing RM8 in your packet. And I think too, one of the things that you'll see in the difference when we start comparing the RM8 to the RM10, don't forget, there's a lot of, as Kelly said, there's a lot of areas that are already zoned RM8. A lot of those are duplex areas on Easy Street, and those are 10,000 square foot lots. So, we didn't want to change that to, as you see where we go to the RM10, where the minimum lot size drops down, where we were trying to get more of the attainable housing in the RM10. We want to keep the RM8 as it is, exists, those zoning districts, and because we also don't want to make those lots that are approved nonconforming with a new RM10 zoning district. But in that RM8, you'll see that we have kind of set up, we have the uses permitted, and we have minimum lot sizes of 10,000 square feet, there's different setbacks, there is minimum lot sizes, it says if you're going to do a single family home or duplex, you have to have garages for each of those. That is not going to change. And if you already have zoning that's RM8, and you have a project, you'll come in and meet those requirements. The RM10, and then as you see, as you go through that zoning district, then it does say townhouse regulations in the RM8. You still get eight units per acre, and remember, townhouses are going to be, maybe a building that has five units, they're all going to be conveyed, but the lot, the requirement for that is a 25-foot wide lot, because those townhouses, the wall becomes the lot line, a little bit of a backyard and a front yard. So, that's the townhouse dynamic. That's all going to stay the same, and it's not going to change for any properties that are, that are already zoned RM8. I just wanted to clarify that, because you'll see some of the carryovers, but some of the slight differences that we've put into the RM10.
So, I just had a question, because that was, oh, that was on the list to ask. I had noticed a five-foot side setback, is that for that specific?
In the current RM10?
When they're adjoining units? Because I said, you're not going to build buildings five feet apart.
Let's see.
Yeah, that's on page two of six, and the first, hand out this one, Dory. You'll see five foot.
Oh, you're talking more about the RM10 district, correct, the new one?
Okay, so my question, I guess, is that for adjoining structures?
If you're okay, I just wanted to, we wanted to make sure that it was set in the RM8, and we'll transgress into that RM10, and then we can definitely have some specific questions with that new zoning district.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, from our, what we proposed here is the RM10, that residential median with the 10 dwelling units per acre. You'll see a couple of things that are underlined over on the left, multifamily dwellings, including what we're defining moving forward as single family for rent. This is something that we're seeing more and more of across the state, across the country, and it literally looks like a single family house that is aggregated on a common lot with other single family homes. So, in essence, there's one parcel, it could be 10, it could be 20 acres, it could be whatever, but there are individual houses that are located on there, and they are, just like I said, it's their single family home, but they're for rent. So, literally what developers are doing is taking a typical multifamily, so an apartment, breaking it out across a larger parcel, and creating a little bit more of a community setting. It is, what we're seeing, a lot of trends, it is cost effective, it's desirable, and it's also becomes into that attainable, affordable housing a lot of cases. You know, the person who's living in that house is, just like they're living in a normal house. However, they've got access to common facilities, but they're not having to pay property taxes, they're not paying on a lot, they're not paying on a lot of different things. It's all still kind of regulated or governed by a master developer or master owner. So, we wanted to make sure that the city has this as an option, because right now it's not defined within the land development code. So, they're again, trying to create that as another option for the city, and I think, Dory, you've even had a couple of applications asked about single family for rent.
We had a pre-application meeting for some property, where, think of it as apartments, but instead of stacked, they're all laid out, and there's separation between them, but it's strictly for rent. So, they're not creating individual lots for the single family homes, it's, like Kelly said, one large lot with these individual, single family homes for rent, and it was...
I'm glad you answered that, because I was going to ask you, what was all this for? And now you answered a question, because they're applying.
But actually, we actually had, I think we had this proposed already in the RM10, and surprisingly, then we had a pre-application meeting, and when they came and discussed the development, this is what they wanted, and so it made sense that we had this.
Okay, well, now I know why we're here. I was like, okay, thank you.
Absolutely. The other thing that we wanted to point out here, and this is something that we talked about with staff quite a bit, is that under the accessory residential uses, including some office and some small scale retail, we're actually defining that, you know, if there is the ability to have a small specialty or niche type of facility on the premises, why not allow it? You know, it could be, we're seeing more and more of these, whereas a small coffee shop, small postal, or just even a, almost like a office type of setting where somebody can come in and rent the office for a day or a certain amount of time. Right now, the code does not permit that. So, we're trying to encourage those types of uses where it makes sense. But there again, that would be as part of an application that would have to come through for a formal rezoning, it's just somebody could not just go out and do it today. Now, starting to look through the specific standards, and I'm going to jump to the five foot, we're talking about five foot between structures, but that is also a, that's the minimum between, let's say, a property line and a unit. Here's the one thing that you also have to keep in mind, the National Fire Prevention Association, NFPA code, has building standards that are also in the code as well as the city's building code that says, if you're going to have a structure or habitable areas within a certain amount of distance, then that either has to be, if it's constructed to a certain standard, it can be, meet one standard, if it's not, then it has to be further apart. What we're trying to do is, in this case, you know, it's a one-story, five feet, you know, I know that seems like pretty close, 10 feet with two stories, we're talking about on the interior of a piece of property that is master planned at that point. So, the idea is not to waste the land, not to just have it set aside for, you know, green space or whatever else, because a lot of times, that area is not used for anything. So, we're trying to, you know, concentrate the structures within one area, allowing for additional open spaces, and also while still meeting the Florida Building and Accessibility Codes.
Okay. I still have a question. On the five foot, so you're saying, even though this occupies one plot, you know, land, you got several buildings, putting them five feet apart from each other with roof overhangs? I'm assuming you're going wall to wall?
If they, if they meet the code standards for construction and how the city defines their setbacks.
Those overhangs are going to have to be completely fireproof, I mean, that's awfully close to put buildings.
Correct. And there again, that is one of the things that the Fire Marshal and the Florida Building Code actually regulate quite stringently, from a construction standard, so that, I mean, and I work with a lot of private sector developers, and, you know, in order to even achieve less than, you know, 10 feet, it's $20,000 to $30,000 worth of construction cost. And so, they start, they have to weigh the additional setback versus physical construction.
There's kind of an example, Mr. Christina, I don't have the packet number, but it's in that, it's in that attainable housing packet on page 15.
Yeah, I read that.
There's, there's up that top corner, it shows these two-story houses that you can tell are close to each other, but, you know, they're probably about five feet apart. Now, that would be if these were, if these were individual lots, that five feet would be from a property line, if it was something that was, where it was one large lot. On page 15, it's the Fresh Paint by Garmin Homes up in the chapel here, Hill. That's the intent of it, is that you, you may still have a nice house, they're just closer to each other.
And just to clarify, that's, you know, using that example that Dory's talking about, that actually creates a 10-foot building separation at that point.
Because of the two-story.
Yeah, I was gonna say, well, if, with the interior lot lines, so it wouldn't just be five, it'd be five feet from that interior lot line to the next unit, so, yeah, if it goes to two-story, then it goes up, and there's actually some additional provisions that the city has, that as things get taller, the more they scooch, scooch, there's a technical term for you tonight, the more that they move those buildings apart.
Excuse me, so this is, this is basically several homes, excuse me. This is basically several homes located on one parcel of land. The distance between the several homes would be five feet from each one, which is a 10-foot distance. Pardon me?
See, that's what I'm not reading. Is it five foot to the property line?
No.
Or is it five foot between buildings?
Now, the intent is that it's five feet if it is on an interior property line.
To the line?
To the line.
So, it'd be 10 feet between the buildings?
10 feet, and then 20 feet, so.
Totally different.
Yes.
Okay.
But, but as far as what you're going, go ahead and finish your comment, and I think I know where you're going.
But the setback for the exterior boundaries of the parcel is not five feet.
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Absolutely not, and actually, no, and I'm glad you brought that up, because there are additional standards that we're going to talk about here in just a minute, just for that reason.
I've seen this type of development, it's been used for at least 40 years that I'm aware of in the Midwest, it's very successful and very attractive.
Mm-hmm.
So, 10 feet is far enough between houses, I think.
Where would be, where would this be? Do you have any idea of what part of the city?
No, we don't.
We don't?
No.
Okay.
It won't be next to you, though, because you're already zoned.
Got you.
Okay? Don't worry about it.
All right. Any other questions, commissioners?
And actually, one of the things is...
Sorry, go ahead, sir.
No, I know, I was gonna say, one thing we will do as part of our public hearing, we do have a couple of examples of the single family for rent, so we can show you, well, similar pictures to what Monae's going to talk about here in just a second. We'll show you the aerial, and we'll kind of show you the before, the after, and then what it looks like from the ground. And when I say that there's a waiting list for these units, that especially the one project that's close to my house, versus the multifamily, the traditional multifamily building that is right beside it, and actually has a little bit better amenities, there's a waiting list on one, not on the other one.
Hmm.
So.
Interesting.
But there again, so what we're talking about is trying to clarify some of the uses, providing some of those additional things that is supported by the comprehensive plan, and at the end of the day, there again, we're not zoning anybody's property, we're not saying it's going to be done by right, that somebody can't come in and just pull a BURT permit tomorrow, it still has to come back before this body and the council as well, before it can move forward. So, the alternative standards are the other standards for consideration, and I'm actually going to jump to this third bullet there. We are talking about, even though the way a lot of the code is set up to where if it is, we'll say residential up against residential, typically there is no buffers required. However, what we're proposing is, because of some of these changes... However, what we're proposing is, because of some of these changes and some of the differences that can be applied, is that the city would then have the ability to require additional buffering and screening, depending on if, even if it is a single-family to single-family, that if it's a lower-density single-family to a higher-density single-family, which kind of sounds kind of counterintuitive, that the city could then say, well, we don't think that those are exactly compatible, so we're going to require this between the houses, or between the projects. So that is one of the things that we've talked about with Lisa and Dory, as far as, let's make sure we're building in some additional protections as well. The other thing we wanted to kind of, and I'm going to work my way backwards, is looking at some of the best planning practices and engineering standards that are out there right now on parking. What we see are, a lot of the codes, and, you know, city's no different, they're based off of nineteen eighty, nineteen nineties, and they've really not changed since that time. But what we've noticed, and what we see a lot more of, is parking is inherently different these days. So we're seeing that a lot of projects don't need, in essence, two spaces per unit, especially if you have a single-family unit, I mean, excuse me, a single-bedroom unit, or smaller unit. We're seeing, you know, especially if we're talking about some of these attainable housing projects, you may see one vehicle versus two. There was a gentleman that used to work with us, and between him and his wife, they had one vehicle, and they used public transit. They used the micro-mobility to move around, so they would actually do the scooters, they'd do the ride-share, and that was their way of life. Personally, I couldn't do that, but what we're saying is allowing, you know, the single-family detached house that we all know and love, still requiring the two parking spaces per unit on that. And there's also still the standards in there as far as ensuring that there is adequate space on the lot to park those off the street. Once we start getting into some of the townhouses and the manufactured homes, you know, what we're saying, and what we're seeing more and more of, is drop the number down from two to 1.5. Some people will go, well, that's a lot. Well, you think about it, we're talking about half a parking space per unit, so one, you know, one per two. But making sure that there are parking provisions for visitors at that point, so you're kind of starting to move it back, that needle back up a little bit. And we're seeing actually lower numbers than this across the country, and in also so many situated cities than, like Sebastian. So like I said, 1.5 has been a kind of a happy medium that we're seeing amongst, across communities, but there again, we're seeing some communities actually go lower than that, and start to base it off of a certain number of bedrooms and certain type of unit itself.
Another thing that we would, it's not with the RM-10, but something to consider, and we may want to add it with the RM-10, because we are reducing those lot sizes. Currently, in the parking regulations, it states that you cannot use your garage to count towards a parking space. So you have to have two parking spaces outside of the garage. But we're doing, if we're going to be leaning towards smaller lots, maybe there's not the propensity to bring a boat home, and you have tools in the garage, you don't need as much lawn equipment, that we, some of the, where you can get credit inside your garage as a parking space. So that may help sometimes with your front setbacks, you don't have to have a full, two parking spaces in your driveway, you can go more towards your single drives with a car in the garage, so that'd be something that, we may say, if your lot is under five thousand square feet, you can have credit in the garage for parking with the required reduction of parking. So we kind of wanted to get your feeling on that tonight, too, if you're leaning towards reducing those parking standards for some of the multifamily or the RM-10 zoning.
Can I ask a question about the parking? It just seems that one visitor space per ten is a little chintzy. I mean, I could see one per five, but that was just my opinion.
And there again, what we've talked about with Lisa and Dory is, you know, we're seeing more and more of the one to ten, Mr. Simmons, we are seeing the one to five, and so the question becomes, what does the city want? You know, we're going to provide you some information, we're going to provide you some guidance and some thoughts. At the end of the day, you all have the ability to make the recommendation further up the food chain, and says, hey, great, we like the one and a half, but we want it at one per five, because that's what Sebastian wants. And that's perfectly within the realm of responsibilities here.
Just to do a quick calculation, then, to kind of see what the difference it would make, currently, right now, if you have twenty townhouse units, you would need forty parking spaces. That's what the current code would be. If it was reduced to one and a half, you would need thirty parking spaces, plus one visitor space for every ten, so that development would require twenty-three. So it would go from forty to twenty-three. If you dropped it down to five, then that would be twenty, so it'd be twenty-six instead of the forty, if we dropped that visitor space. So it definitely will drop the amount of parking spaces, but the extra visitor spaces is going to add minimal to the 1.5.
I think it would help us also if we bear in mind that what we're, what we're, the aim, the goal, is to provide attainable housing, which is perhaps, by definition, more modest than the, I can park ten cars in my driveway, thank God it never happens, because I don't even want that many people in my house. But I do know that if you drive around to many of the, many of the places where we have townhouses or apartment buildings, those great big parking lots are sitting empty most of the day. Prior to, prior, I mean, during the work hours of the day, they are empty most of the day, because these are people who are, one of the reasons for living in a multi-unit development of whatever kind, and there are many reasons, but one of the reasons beyond affordability is that you're working all the time, and you don't really have the time to take care of all of these other exterior things, and I think that if we kind of focus on it, we're looking to provide a modest, attainable, respectable housing unit for the people who work in Sebastian, and for people who we might like to stay in Sebastian, like our children and grandchildren when they graduate from school, and we don't necessarily want them living with us anymore. And then there's people like me, who someday soon won't want that bigger house, or will I, or will I be able to afford it? Because I have to pay somebody to do everything now.
I think the attainable packet from the ULI said it good, too. There's that stigma that attainable housing sometimes means cheap housing, and that's not what the new developments are coming out to be. They're just more smaller, they may be streamlined, but they're not necessarily cheap housing, they're just, they're more attainable housing, but they still have some quality standards.
Hello, my name is Monaya, and again, I'm with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. Also to that point, in regards to reducing parking standards, we are seeing parking reform across the nation, and one of the biggest things in tie-ins between attainable housing, affordable housing, and reduction in parking standards, is that your standard parking space costs about five thousand dollars in this market to build. And so when you start adding in those additional parking standards, it makes development much more expensive, and those costs are being passed along to consumers. So it makes it able for a developer to come in and also build in our multifamily and our more attainable units, if they can kind of offset those prices with the reduction in parking. And there's literature from the Florida Housing Coalition that supports this as well.
Thank you.
Let me interject one thing. The reason I mentioned that was, many times on Thursdays, I may be delivering meals to the complex on Powerline Road, and sometimes it's pretty difficult to find a space to park, close to the unit that you're going to, so.
I guess, I have just a concern here, if you, if you had a mix, let's say seniors and young couples in this housing, I know seniors that have given up the extra car, and they do rely on the single car. Young couples tend to work in different places, and they're relying on two cars. I could see the one and a half spaces working, I understand the five thousand dollar valuation, and we are trying to make these attainable. These are going to be rental units, I'm assuming, that we're speaking of primarily? And I'm wondering how that works, they do this down in Port St. Lucie, and I've looked at the rents down there, they don't seem, you know, affordable by what we might consider affordable up here. What would be, you know, if we're looking at nineteen hundred dollars a month, is that the new affordable for a rent? Are we lowering our standards to get a nineteen hundred dollar rent in Sebastian? So I guess that's my question.
So I would say, one of the things, and kind of building off of what Monae said, is every dollar counts. So, you know, if it's five thousand dollars for a parking space, and/or then, you know, you multiply that with stormwater, and then you're dealing with, you know, all these other aspects, the dollars start to add up. Right now, it is a, it's, you know, when I say the developer's market, I've got people that would love to find nineteen hundred dollars right now. It's just because of the market and the way everything else. Now, heaven forbid we have a slight correction, but, you know, those dollars are going to come back down, but at the same time, you know, they're basing their cost off of their cost to provide services, what it costs to maintain, build, construct, you know, utilities, all of that, and, you know, as things keep going up, those rents are going up. We have a gentleman in our office that has a couple of rental units, and I just, I point-blank asked him, I said, Justin, what does it cost you to provide services for that unit? What did it cost to construct? And we did a breakdown, and he said, you know, his big thing is, when it was constructed versus now, plus taxes, plus everything else, he's actually running a deficit for this one couple, because they're an older couple, they've actually been with him for ten years, so he is subsidizing about two hundred dollars a month for them, off of what it would actually, he could get, and what's costing him. Now, he's making it up on the others, but he kind of is using the, I'll say, that law of averages, of that one unit is more attainable for that older couple, because they're on a fixed income, so he spreads the cost around on the other units. Kind of a long way of saying, I mean, rents are rents, development costs are development costs, development costs are going up, supplies are harder to get, so if we can try to help offset some of those costs and/or other aspects, then there's an option or opportunity for those costs to come down.
I think we spoke about, too, though, this, the RM-10, taking baby steps. We're not sure if this is going to bring in enough attainable housing that we're looking for, the type that we envision in our brain, but it does, it's helping, it's a good step. And I don't forget that when, we don't have any RM-10 in the city right now, so any developer that comes in that wants to attain this RM-10 zoning, they have to come before you, and there's going to have to be at least some sort of reason or conceptual or development of why he wants that RM-10. And I think, though, it's a good step towards the right direction if we, now, you guys may come back and say, we don't want to adjust the parking, and we can leave that at two spaces, I think, though, it's, it's good to try out this RM-10 with some of these baby steps, to see if we do get a development in here, using some of these new regulations, and what kind of development it brings in. Certainly, if it's not bringing in what we envision our attainable housing to be, and it's not bringing in something at the price point for Sebastian, then we can tweak some of these regulations. But this is, this is going to be an initial zoning district, so there's going to be some trial and error on the developments that we come in and that are proposed to use this zoning district. But this is our baby step initiate, just trying to get some of the attainable housing.
And the last bullet, actually, it should have been the first bullet, but up there, and this is a little bit more of a radical thought that we're seeing from place to place, and there have been some pretty decent studies on this, but, you know, residential units or multifamily units that have less than seven hundred square feet of habitable space, that is pretty much an efficiency, or maybe a very small one-bedroom unit. When you start looking at the impacts of that size unit on water, wastewater, traffic, what we've noticed are that, you know, those units are using inherently less infrastructure and making less impact than a two- or three-bedroom, but yet, right now, all of our regulations treat them exactly the same. So one of the things that we are recommending as, you know, in the RM-10, or, you know, under the attainable housing, however it may shake out, is if it is a habitable structure or habitable space less than seven hundred square feet, then why not allow that to be only counted as half a dwelling unit? Most of the units that you're seeing being constructed are twelve to fourteen hundred, so that gives, in essence, it's, and what you're creating is an efficiency or an economical unit, it's one-bedroom, it's the same as if it is a two-bedroom, twelve-hundred-square-foot unit. So why penalize somebody for trying to do that? And there again, that also brings the cost down. And we're not talking about proliferation of units all across, because what we're doing and what we're seeing from a lot of the development community is, they're providing a portion of those units at that because of, you know, whatever. They're still doing their twelve hundred, they're still doing their thousand square feet, they're still doing their eighteen hundred square feet, but this is another one of those options. And there again, based off of the analysis, looking at water, wastewater, traffic, schools and everything else, it is literally coming out to be about the same as a typical two-bedroom I see some head nods, I see some-
Makes perfect sense to me.
Okay.
In other words, also, by going to the half-a-unit designation, per se, a seven-hundred-square-foot unit, this would also reduce the permitting fees, et cetera, instead of assessing the full amount.
That's, that's one of those things that a lot of places are doing, is if you're meeting these qualifications, then, you know, your impact fees, your connection fees and everything else are also subsequently reduced. So there again, another tool in the toolbox for the city to try to achieve that attainable, missing-middle housing component. Okay, we do have a couple of examples, I'm going to let Monae kind of walk through some of these, because Lisa and Dory, we were all talking, it's like, okay, we need, we're going to be talking a lot about some text, we're going to be throwing some numbers at you, but what does some of that look like, or what could it look like on the ground?
So here we have a site plan that is in Greer, South Carolina, and so when we talked about that RM-10, we talked about a single-family for rent. This is an example of a single-family for rent, so you don't see any of those individual lot lines, but they have quite a few housing options that range from one-bedrooms to two-bedrooms, and then they also have all of those amenities. So what you're looking at here has about a density of eight-point-five dwelling units per acre, and it's a mix of about six different housing types, including cottage homes and
Are we going blind, or what?
Just having a little, any idea what you have here for acreage and number of units? Just for, I'm not seeing a scale, just to get an idea of what we're looking at here.
So this is about thirty-four-point-eight acres.
Seventy-four acres?
Thirty-four.
Oh, thirty-four, okay. I see up to five units per acre over here on the legend, but it looks like it's more than that.
Yeah, I see it here, thirty-four-point-eight, and up to two-hundred-and-ninety-six units.
Yeah, in my magnifying glasses.
Yeah. Our vision is not as good as it was.
Not as good as it used to be.
I think this is a well-planned, well-planned development with, I like the diversity, but I hope we see, I hope we see somebody who wants to do that.
So, moving on to the next one, we have this site plan here as well, and so for this one, we're looking at about twelve dwelling units per acre. Again, these are townhomes with, townhomes with garages on the bottom for some of the units, but again, you have a little bit diversity, and then you see the elevations over to the
So with this arrangement, you've got your two parking spaces per unit, you've got the garage, which is now, and then one exterior. Outside of the garage, I'm assuming there would be a parking.
Yes, so you have the garage, which is an interior parking space, and then you have one exterior as well.
Uh huh. Now, this I've seen, this is very common up north, actually.
And then some of the units do have two parking spaces. And then some of the units do have two parking spaces.
In addition?
Yes. Because they have a wider garage. I'm going to move on to our next site plan. And so this is up in our neck of the woods, so we have about nine dwelling units per acre and so you see they are townhomes with the attached garages in the front.
Okay. So when we, in our RM-10, we talked about, we were proposing what says attached and that the minimum lot area is one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five feet with a lot width of twenty-five feet. So that's because each one of those units, there's that wall between those, that's the twenty-five foot wide lot that goes, you know, that goes back then, as you can see how these, probably, probably some area in the front, the back probably looks like that's community area, but that's why, that's why when we, you know, when we say twenty-five foot wide lot, those are, those are accountable for those townhouse type of developments. It, it's not meaning that, I don't think you, you couldn't put a twenty-five with a twenty-five foot wide, you wouldn't be able to put a single family because at that point then, we've got the setbacks and you've got five feet setbacks, so now you've got a fifteen foot wide house. So that's why those, the, when we say attached, that's referring to those townhouse type of developments.
That's all? That's all the footprint needed for a unit like that, twenty-five feet in the width?
Pardon me?
That's the footprint for that one unit would be twenty-five feet? That's all you need?
Yes.
Well, these are small.
So the, on Schuman Drive, the Sandridge townhouses, those met that twenty-five feet, that's how wide those units are, those units are twenty-five feet.
That's Sandridge?
And they're seventy-five feet, I think the houses themselves are about fifty-five, sixty feet long and then they have a little bit of front and back of the actual lot that's conveyed to them. So, and when you do townhouses and you're conveying like that, it's, it's a, a two-step process. There's a site plan where we're getting all of this, but then there's also a preliminary plat because lots, as a subdivision, because lots are going to be conveyed.
And so actually, the widths for this development, they vary, those interior townhomes have about a lot width of about twenty feet and then the exterior townhomes have a lot width of about twenty-five.
Go on to the next one.
Okay, we're on.
Go ahead.
Move on to next.
So again, we have some additional townhomes, but instead of the individual garages, you see here, they have the shared parking out front for the entire units or for the entire development. And so again, we have two-story units and then you also see that separation or that setback in between the townhome developments. And here, we're looking at a density of about ten dwelling units per acre.
No garages.
No garage, so it's all parking out front.
Yep.
Okay.
No, I just, I have one quick question, I had it written down earlier, with this, without the garage, without the overhangs and that sort of thing. When you have a large group of homes, say you've got five hundred units of housing, how would you handle runoff from these impervious surfaces, you know, the asphalt and that sort of thing? Now, how's that done? Typically, my concern is cars are oily messes and they drip, so we've got runoff and that sort of thing that's contaminated. So what do we do there? Do we have?
Drainage systems.
Yeah, well, that's it. Do we stipulate a particular type of drainage system that will separate oil from stormwater runoff at that point? That's something down the road that we do or?
So a couple of different things. One, the, you know, the city engineer, I mean, you're, you're currently working on a stormwater master plan, you're currently working on a couple of different things. The, you know, the applicant on this one had to do a drainage, a stormwater drainage study that not only looked at, you know, what's the pre and post-development conditions, but they also looked at how much of that is impervious, whether it is, in this case, parking, sidewalks, walkways, you know, improved areas, and then they had to account for all of that through the process. Through the permitting process, there are water quality and quantity standards. Of course, being on where you are, you've got a little additional components that we deal with, especially if it's going to flow into the lagoon system. And you've got provisions in your comprehensive plan that are putting out there and, you know, basically calling out additional water quality standards because of your location. So as the city's going to be updating, you know, your stormwater policies and manuals, they're going to be taking into consideration not only the amount of water that's being generated, but also where that water's going, at what rate it's going to be released, and also what are those water quality components that are required before it can be discharged.
Mr. Christina, it's not like they can just come in with building permits, this would be a site plan.
No, no.
So, and then I, what I could tell you is, is a...
Down the road.
Yeah, and something like this, though, is probably going to have better drainage because they're going to have catch basins that have the filters and those, that water is, is taken care of before it gets into any type of overflow. Different from our single-family subdivisions with the swale, which the same oil coming off of our cars are just going right into those swales. So this is actually going to have better stormwater reduction.
Well, I'm sure it would be, right now, it just sits in front of people's houses in those swales.
Yeah.
And collars. Okay, that's all.
And that's really, that, that was the last one, we wanted to go out on a high note. And we, we did not want to, you know, over inundate you with a bunch of different standards, a bunch of different things to be thinking about. We're trying to, as, as Dory said, you know, we're taking these baby steps, small steps right at a time. Let's go after what we can in this case, which is the provision for a new district. At the same time, looking at some of those new standards that can go along with it that we can then start to apply. The city's going to be moving forward with a total update and of larger chunks of the land development code, but, you know, in talking with Lisa and Dory, you've got properties and projects right now that would, that are looking for this to come in so that they can take, and I'm not going to say take advantage, but utilize those standards because it's something that they see that is needed here in the community and can be done and done right.
And, and make money.
And make money.
Yeah.
But I think that's why we were...
That's the whole point.
But, but we don't, we don't want to make attainable housing and make some of these reductions, and that's been our dilemma, is we don't want to make them so that it just makes it easier for the contractors and the developers to make more money because they have to put in less cost to these developments with less parking. We want to make sure that we get a good attainable housing product from this also that is going to have...
Well, that ultimately is what's going to be the driver behind every bit of everything that we propose, is the fact that these developers need to make money, otherwise they won't do it.
But I think what we were looking from our discussion tonight is, is how did you feel about some of those points that Kelly pointed out?
I think we're headed in the right direction.
About the parking, the smaller lot sizes, are you okay with, under a certain square footage, that it counts as half, half a dwelling unit instead of a full, you know, for density purposes, if you were comfortable with, with the direction that it's going in?
I think it's a great first step.
Yeah.
Great.
I think we need to have new thinking in, new things to, to, you know, new solutions to the problems that we keep discussing, meeting after meeting when we talk about affordable housing. So, yeah, I think it's a great first step.
Well, Mr. Carter, I do want to point out too, though, don't forget that we, we, there are two different terms, affordable housing, attainable housing.
Well, yes.
And the affordable housing would be more in the, the incentives and that's going to be, that's based on your, your median income and the, the cost that you can charge for those housing.
Right.
And we will keep those separate terms so that we have, we can get both affordable housing and attainable housing.
I guess we need to be scolded, I need to be scolded anyway.
I just want to make sure that we, that we all on the same page, that was true.
I need, I need to be disciplined.
Could, could we, can I just talk about the square footage for the various different, because I've lived in most of these and I, I think the square footage is too high.
You think what?
I think it's too high. Okay, I lived in an efficiency, you know what an efficiency is? It's a studio apartment.
Yeah.
Okay? You have, maybe you have a bedroom in your studio apartment, but maybe you have a kitchenette and a multi-purpose room. But I think that six hundred square feet is extremely generous for that because I lived, I lived in a studio apartment.
Half of that.
That was, it was, it was, it was about four hundred and fifty square feet and I had a separate bedroom and a separate bathroom and a separate kitchen and then that multi-purpose room with a pull-out bed in case I had company. And it was a, was a great place to live, fit my income real well at the time. When I could afford more, I moved into a two-bedroom house that we bought, which was six hundred and forty-three square feet, two bedrooms. Built in nineteen forty-three, that house is still standing today.
Of course it is.
It is still a respectable home in a respectable neighborhood, lived in by nice respectable people who cut the grass regularly and have planted new trees and things. I looked it up on Zillow just the other day to see if it was still there, looks just about the same. But it was, it was a very livable house for a young married couple who eventually had two babies. And then we moved to the big house, which was eleven hundred square foot, three-bedroom And that was the big house because many, many of the three-bedroom homes that were built right after the war in the early nineteen fifties, up to nineteen fifty-seven, nineteen sixty, were about somewhere between eight hundred and fifty and nine hundred and sixty square foot, three-bedroom homes. And I, I just want to say that bigger doesn't necessarily mean designed better. If any of you have ever spent any time in a really nice travel trailer or fifth wheel or motor home, you can get a picture of what efficient design is all about. And I think you can have really very nice homes, very nice living quarters in less square footage if they're designed better. And I know that, I, that's why I say, I think these could be smaller and we would still, again, get to that attainable, more of the attainable, not all of it, but I think we, I think we need to, to be able to have a source of more modest, smaller, more affordable starter homes and ending homes for people. And like I said, it doesn't have to be all of them, but if you have a couple in every development, I think that would be helpful. And I, I spend a good amount of time thinking about this because I guess I don't have any hobbies anymore.
Louise, we had, we had discussed this too, would, would it, would it make a difference if instead of saying the minimum living area that we said maximum size? I know we have already that a maximum unit size would be fourteen hundred square feet, but if we did a maximum, the maximum size of a two-bedroom unit could be eight fifty. There's wiggle room in there to go lower than that.
Yeah, I think so.
So with the...
I, I like that, that's very smart, Dory, you're very smart.
But then that way, you have, you can do any size for that, but that would be the maximum for a two-bedroom.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking if that would cause a problem for anything with design.
Do we change the wording from required minimum to required maximum?
I, I think so.
Do you see an issue with that or anything, Kelly?
Yeah, you can go, you don't want the thing, the thing is, if you're, if you're good, really small, how small do you want to go?
Two hundred and forty-three square feet.
Well...
Tiny homes, have you never...
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know.
I, I think, you know, you can absolutely start looking at some of those minimum and maximums, especially if there are options.
Or give you a minimum and a maximum.
So, I mean, as long as they are options and you're not saying, "Thou shall build everything at five hundred square feet moving forward."
Yeah.
There again, it becomes an option and if you're going to do that, here's how we're going to help facilitate some of that on the city's behalf.
Yeah, minimum and a maximum because people will take advantage of that minimum.
Well, some will, but I, but...
The builders might not.
Well, yeah.
Well, and it's, the, the point, the whole point is to create a diverse, a diverse area. I, I've been carrying this around with me for, oh, let's see, two years maybe? It's a, if you've ever looked at Southern Living, they have a bajillion home plans on there and this is just the sweetest little two-unit, thousand square feet each unit, no shared walls, would fit so beautifully on a corner lot.
Are you soliciting bids, Louise?
Pardon me?
Are you trying to solicit a bid from a builder?
No, I, I would like to live in it myself.
A, a quick question for you on that, the square footage. I'm sure that you went, I saw some floor plans and is this based on what you've seen from builders, plans they've supplied for this type of housing or?
Like I said, those are actually all over the board. We've talked with a number of other communities around the state and, and listening to them, what, what are they doing, what's working, what's not? So when I say, you know, the seven hundred in that seven fifty is kind of that sweet spot for that half-dwelling unit, that's about where we've seen some of the break. We've seen some communities that have said nine hundred square feet or less and that may be, let me push the envelope a little too much for what we're talking about here. So that, you know, that's the reason we're saying seven hundred square feet, let's see if it works and then if it's not, then what at that point?
Not too long ago, I, I talked to a national, I was talking with a national builder, they build all over the United States, and we were talking about various different plans and, and the need, how to satisfy, we're, we're almost at a crisis point right now with the, the need and it's, it'll take a year to build into the need if we're lucky, if we can get somebody to do it, to build into it. And the, the builder said, "Well, you know," it's like, "I, I think we can do this for about somewhere between two seventy-five and three, three and a quarter per unit." And I was like, "Wait a minute."
Can we go again?
"What size unit are you talking about?" He said, "Well, seventeen, eighteen hundred square feet." And I said, "No, no, no, bring it down, can you bring it down?" He said, "We can build anything we're allowed to build, we can build anything we're allowed to build." And I think that kind of like boing hit me right in the head and it's like, "I think we could get better, I think we could get people building into what we need if we allow them to, not force them to, but allow them to."
So the square footages in that chart for the RM-10 are currently the same in the RM-8.
I know.
Except for, I think duplex dwellings, we went down a little bit. So, yeah, if you feel the need to maybe drop these, either make them maximums or drop them down fifty square feet or a hundred square feet because it's the RM-10, that's a consideration also.
So, Dory, do you want a motion tonight to pass this on to council?
No, 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 this is just a discussion.
Just a discussion.
Yes, we'll, we'll put together the draft ordinance, it'll come back to you for, as the LDA.
Well, I'm definitely in favor of it.
Yeah. We're good.
Yeah, what we was, what we would ask is, you know, after you leave tonight, think about it, talk to your neighbors, talk to your friends and then email or provide those comments to Dory and Lisa so that they can get those to us in advance of the, when, when we bring this back as part of the ordinance, so that, you know, we can say, "Hey, we've talked with so-and-so, we've got the comments and we're trying to answer some of those questions in the interim." And then bring you back something that you, you would be comfortable in recommending for passing on.
I'd just like to take a minute to say thank you for putting this together. I've been ringing this bell for twenty years.
Ring your bell.
Yeah.
Somebody's listening.
Yeah, somebody is listening, and you, and you did an excellent job of putting this all together.
Yes, very good.
It was, yeah, fabulous.
Government wheels turn slowly, Louise.
I know that.
That's why it's taken 20 years.
But you know, I, I'm at this point in my life where there's more sand in the bottom of the hourglass than there is in the upper part, so I'm in a bit of a hurry.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And there's something about a squeaky wheel. Yeah. Okay, so we don't have a motion then, this evening, or anything?
No.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, so we're going to move on then, commissioners' matters. Mister Commissioners, do we have any?
I have nothing.
No, anyone? Okay, city attorney, is he here?
Nope.
Okay, staff matters.
We apologize, we've been working hard on different ordinances and tweaking them, that's why we haven't had a meeting a couple of months, but we do have a, we'll have another meeting July 21st, we have a small three-lot subdivision plat that we'll be bringing for you, and then there's a couple of meetings in August, that we have the CIP plan coming for you, so we'll have a few more meetings now coming up, we're sorry for the gap that we had since May, but, and thank you for your time for reviewing these, these are, these are helpful comments for us to...
And thank you for having us. All right, nothing else said? Be a good jerk.